We're going to call this regular scheduled meeting to order. I would like to welcome Mr. William Mason from Broadway Christian Church. He's with us tonight. If you want to stand up, everybody can say hi.
Hello.
We'll start with a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, item one, review the agenda. Does anybody have any questions?
I do not.
Okay, we've moved to number two. Anybody like to make a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed. Motion carries three zero. Approval of minutes for February 22nd regular meeting. We might have an issue because I was not present at that meeting and there's only two people to vote.
It has to be approved and tabled for minutes until the next meeting.
Yes. Those minutes will have to be taken.
Do we need to make a motion to do that?
Yes.
I make a motion to table item number three until the next regular scheduled board meeting.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Did you get a second on that?
You. I thought that was you.
Oh, did, okay.
Okay. Do you want me to do it again?
No. I didn't hear the first one.
Sorry. Okay, students to have recognition. Skill, okay.
Okay. We've got another big day of recognition. We're going to start with, I'm just going to go in order so it might be a little out of order from the agenda, but we're going to start with our 22 Excellence in Teaching Awards. This is going to, in recognition and award of two, Excellence in Teaching for Elementary Preschool Level, and this is Miss Amy Bowles. I get tickets left on all the time, so we're high. I know, we already got our recognized ones. I'm so proud of you. We're going to do another Friday walk here, right?
It must be the same.
All right, thank you so much. And then we have Mr. Gordon Miller, who is also a recipient for the Teacher of the Year Excellence in Teaching Award for the Middle School Level listed also by County School and University. Okay, and then we knew that Ms. Crowell, who is a Mayor Crowell, she's our 22, 2022 Excellence in Teaching Award for the High School Level, also listed by County School and University. So we're really proud of the teachers, quality of teachers that we have in the district. How many applicants did we have?
Every school had to nominate, and then the principals had a selection committee within their building. They chose three, and then that went to a district committee.
Okay, then we.
And then we chose.
There's this big process. All right.
Which one?
We have, we'll do these next. Okay. Yeah, thank you. So on behalf of your Excellent Shows Award, also from the Board of Education, we are going to honor a commitment and dedication for students from the Clark County Public Schools and support to our district transportation department at this time that has no fault accidents in the past three years. And I'm going to ask Mr. Parker to come up along with our preparation, as I read off the names. And we're going to be able to honor several of our drivers on a monthly basis. If we had them all in here at one time, there would be too many, so we're going to have to break them down and do these monthly. So our first is Ms. Susan DeCrot. Thank you so much. Ms. Hendrick, do you want to come over here with us?
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And our drivers are also getting patches. They have district jackets, so they also get kind of patches that are going to also showcase their exceptional work. Mr. Michael Borders. Okay, that's all right, he'll get his tomorrow, right? Mr. Fred Cornet. Okay. Goldil Davis. Is that boys? Allison Ellsworth. And she has got the best pick of them today.
Also book must extraordinary.
Yes. Oh, yeah. Awesome. Thank you so much. Mitchell Goldil. Okay, that's Destiny Griffith.
Okay, he's under.
Okay, thank you for letting me put my name in. It's been a whole. And Mr. Fisher, I'm sorry, I should have had you come out here and do pictures with everyone, too.
Yep. You were good.
Thanks, thank you. And I'd like to give an extra thank you to our bus driver, all of our bus drivers. They actually probably never, we all had difficult jobs, right? But our bus drivers are the very first people that are students see, they're the very last educator that are students see when they go home. They have an incredibly difficult job driving, navigating traffic, other oncoming traffic, and bad weather, and rainy weather, with the bus load are most precious objects. So I just want to say thank you again to our transportation staff, Mr. Fisher, Mr. Stone, you all have a valuable job. They have also started attending several of our PLCs that we share and talk with you all about, our own student, not just discipline, but like culture on the bus, culture inside the school, relationships between our leaders and our bus drivers, our transportation department, our education staff. So we are seeing some tremendous improvement with communication back and forth between the school and the bus drivers because of everybody and we appreciate that very much. I'm going to give that to you. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Parker, from Winchester.
Winchester Insurance.
Insurance.
And I can tell you, this group of post drivers has done a much better job on claims and losses than prior. These things work, and I really appreciate the effort from everybody.
Thank you so much. I don't know, but this looks like a really big stack. I'm going to read off a lot of names. I'm not quite sure if all of our students are here. This is going to be in order, so you might just want to put them down and pick up the top. But what we also had was at our CTE, I'm sorry, our ATC, Area Technology Center attached to GRC, a couple of, probably about three or four weeks ago, we had a Skills USA competition. And so this is a regional competition with welding, automotive, and I believe carpentry. And then there was a quiz bowl where we had some scholarship winners as well. So there's a lot of awards here, but they all deserve special recognition for the amount of time and labor and knowledge that they've been able to put into this skill. So our welding contest, first place is Mr. Mario Aragüe, $3,000 scholarship recipient. And welding, $1,000 scholarship recipient is Mr. Adam Heath. Welding, first contest, third place, $750 scholarship goes to Ian Salis. $500 scholarship also for welding is Aiden Weston. Another $500 scholarship for Mike, Michael Hall. And another $500 scholarship for Caleb Harrison. And then we have overall contest part. So these weren't necessarily scholarship recipients, but also we said high performance. This is in automotive. First place is Matthew Jones. Second place is Nick Warren. Third place is James Bowman. First place is Casey Banks. And second place is Kira Brummer. And then we have opening and closing ceremonies. First place for the Clark County ATC is Kira Brummer. Casey Banks. Jacob Maslin. And Major Muse. Adam Heath. And then our quiz bowl also showed for the Clark County, first Clark County ATC took first place and second place. And the first place winners in the quiz bowl were Brian Crawford. Justin Miller. Damon Light. Caleb Harrison. And then our. And our second place is Kira Brummer again. Casey Banks. Jacob Maslin. Major Muse. And approval. Okay, and this we have another category, we've got three more categories. Jacob, I'm sorry, job skills demo open. Our first place recipient is Michael Hall. And our second place recipient is Cameron Abel. And then we had a skilled screen class, and we, our district got second place there with Emily Hall. And then we had a skilled pledge, this is the last category. First place went to Samuel Riley. And second place went to Thomas Hall. Okay. Thank you. Everybody has their words. And I'll let Mr. Warren pass those pictures around to make sure that you all were able to see those. Okay, and our attendance winners, award winners goes this time to Shear Elementary for the preschool and elementary banner is Shear with a 93.49%. Yeah. You have the same as that boy. Yeah. All right, and our intermediate winner, intermediate preschool winner goes to Baker with a 92.77%. He's literally walking through the door. I'm going to tell him he's late. He just walked past. And then we have an overall winner for Stroh, where's I R S G O. Eighty-four, we're slacking a little bit. We should kind of jump on and let him take you on.
It's too late. Road strikes again. I'll hold it up here on two wheels.
Awesome.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and I'll sort of say I'll move that bowl to Agro because you're going to. Thank you so much. So thank you guys for always indulging us, because we like to honor and recognize staff and Stevens.
Her whole family. Because she called me and she said, should my family come? I go, absolutely.
Mr. Kasen, is there any public comment?
No.
Okay. No public comment, we'll move on to Student Support Services. Number four, consider action and discussion on pay application. Number 1525-07 to Ross Tarn Architects for the Clark County New Early Childhood Center Preschool Construction Project VG21-247 in the amount of $42,964.38. Mr. Stone.
Requesting pay application for the month of February for the architectural services related to design development documents for our preschool. Happy to address any questions, Mr. Stone.
Does anybody have any questions?
I don't.
No, we're moving right along. We're excited.
I make a motion.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Motion passes three zero. Number five.
Just continue to stand up there.
Consider action and discussion of pay application number two to S and M E Inc. for the new early childhood preschool project VG21-247 in the amount of $29,319.70 from construction fund. Mr. Stone.
Geotechnical survey for the Stroh site, Alban Stroh site for the new preschool site. We had this company do dye testing to see how the water flowed underground to make sure that it was stable for a building this size to be erected on. They also drilled a bunch of holes to see, to assess how the rock lay underground. And generally what they found was that there's a sharp drop off on the north side of the property from about four foot of rock underneath ground to about 16 foot of rock underground. So it may require some structural design involving casins in which concrete will be poured to help secure that building on the areas of the drop off of that, of that geothermal, in response to that geothermal survey, geotechnical survey. So everything else looks okay. We're expecting a report back in about two weeks. The company still is waiting on some dye testing for one of the corners of the, of the property, but as soon as that dye testing comes in, they will write the reports. We will get that, send it over to architects to begin the structural design of the foundations.
What about the sinkhole?
Sinkhole seemed to be okay at this point, and that might be an area where they're going to do some of the casins, where they park concrete casins.
I didn't know if the sinkhole was related to the area that it went from four foot drop of rock.
And I don't think it is. We're not hearing any concerns about design with regard to that, the appropriateness, feasibility of that, that site accommodating the building. So I think, I think we're good to go. We're not hearing any strong concerns, and, but we'll know a little more when the, when the structural engineers get, get the formal report. I'll bring that back to you next month, and we'll talk about that then.
We'll get the report next month.
You should be getting the report next, or actually, we should be getting it in about the next two weeks.
Any more questions or discussion? All those in favor?
We'll read the motion.
All right, I make a motion to approve number five as written.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three zero.
Thank you, Mr. Stone.
And number six, consider action and discussion of proposal for financial consulting support with Dr. Tom Shelton of Strategic Educational Services, not to exceed $18,000. Dr. McComas.
This is a gentleman that has been a former CPA for Davies County School District, former superintendent for Davies County School District, former superintendent for Fayette County School District, but is now retired. He does consulting work. I have been working with him for free since I've been here with Ms. Ellis on maternity leave. I thought it would be a good opportunity for me to make sure that I've got extra support for Ms. Dorsey Hedges, there she is, and she's now first taking over for Ms. Ellis. And he's going to obviously be doing more than just those random phone calls that I'm giving him. So I would just like to, and the up to $18,000 is like per day, I'm sorry, not per day for $18,000, obviously, but he has a per day rate, I believe it's $600 sits in there. And so when we use him, he would end up billing us for that. And there's certain things that I'll have him do. Obviously, we're working on that leach comparability study. It's going to be hard for Ms. Ellis to do that while she's home with her newborn. So this is just extra support to make sure that our finances, our financial department's able to run, and I can still carry on the projects that we're currently working on.
That's a good idea. Any questions? I make a motion to approve number six as written.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries three zero. Number seven, consider action and discussion of revisions to policy 09.422. Mr. Harris and Dr. McComas.
So Dr. McComas and I got the opportunity to sit down with admin and teachers from Baker, GRC, and RDC. And what we kind of came to a consensus about was that we had a good foundation, we had a, yeah, a good foundation on our policy, but there were ways that we could improve. So again, we all came to kind of a consensus and looked at other policies, and we thought adding in specific definitions to our policy so that things weren't as loose, you know, like at RDC, touching someone might be more of a prob, like just hey, might be more of a problem at RDC than it would at GRC. So I wanted to kind of narrow that down and be specific. Yeah, also, we're going to, I believe, once we, we're going to meet again next month, and we're going to try to create a matrix to kind of hone in on those definitions even more and be specific about a one-time thing isn't bullying, bullying is repeated, and this is what needs to happen in this specific situation versus a different situation.
I was really proud of Mr. Harris, although he's not giving himself enough credit. He actually went through and reviewed other policies based on some conferencing that he and I did. So he did a lot of the legwork, built us a nice Google Drive. It wasn't just administrators from, we had a teacher representation from Baker, we had administrative representation from RDC, we had teacher representation from, I'm sorry, other administration from GRC, we had parent administration, parent representation that also has a degree and a background in school violence and in bullying, and so we brought in her expertise, we're adding another parent. We also had one of our SLEOs, Officer Green, sits on the committee with us. We have a freshman as well as Mr. Harris as a senior, and then we also have Ms. Bush and a counselor. So it's a nice, well-rounded group of people coming together to review the bullying policy. And I do agree with what he said, it's like we started off thinking that we, the policy wasn't really the issue, it's that we needed to have the education for the students, that it needed to be more intentional. Like what we have right now is like we're compliant and everything, but when we even started talking with our students, their definition sitting in the same room was vastly different. And so we, after looking at those other policies from other districts, they are capturing language, common language better, that we want to make sure that the way you see harassment is the definition. So then we also have the law enforcement side of what harassment is versus bullying. And bullying can also be the, the ability for it to be repeated. So not that it's just a one and done, but is this something that can become a potential to be repeated? And that does look differently at Baker than it does at RDC. And then the whole language, we had a really eye-opening conversation about how the language changes. We also did a survey with our own committee so that we kind of came in with knowing what our perception was of the policy. And we did make the recommendation to the board to switch to the other policy that really has the same tenants as what our original policy has, but it does capture that other language that you see in the policy. And then we'll bring back, you know, a second reading. I look for there to be very minimal changes the next time that we bring it back. But what I'm more excited about is the conversation drew us to what's the real issue? The real issue is making sure that A, you do have a strong policy, which I felt like we did. This is going to give us a stronger platform for that policy, but it also gives us an opportunity to make sure that students are, we're being proactive with our students, and we're going to create some systems that's going to be incorporated to our summer PD so that all teachers, bus drivers, all of our staff are going to make sure that we're using that common language and that we're being proactive about things on a regular basis. So it's not like just coming into class and saying, here's sign this, or pulling it up on a PowerPoint and, you know, running through it and saying, you're done, because that's a compliance piece. But we're going to do things on a, on a regular basis with our students to make sure that we all understand what that looks like inside of, inside of a school setting. So I was really excited about the work that, that we put together that really Mr. Harris, you know, kind of spearheaded for us. And I'm excited about the next meeting.
Me, too.
I think he is, too. He's already been emailing me about it, so.
Well, thank you. Do you need us to vote to approve the first reading?
Yes, please.
Does anybody have any questions?
I have a little, a question. So in the policy that we have uploaded, how do I know what changed?
I'm sorry, the original policy, I should have put that one in there for you, too. If you want to take a second, go to the website.
Okay.
And go pull up the exact same policy number.
And then I can see them side by side. Okay.
And really, let me see your hard copy.
Sure.
So I can reference that. I'm sorry, Ms. Combs about. So in this policy, you'll see a lot of the same, exact same language when you get to the section on like cyberbullying, hazing, menacing, the actual definitions, harassment, harassing communications, stalking, that's the piece that really is different between the original policy and this one. And there's some other small nuances to it, but overall, it's an expanded policy from where we started.
Okay, good. I can come here.
Yes. Great question, and I should have had both of those in there for you. I apologize.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I make a motion for the revision to policy 09.422, first reading.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries three zero. Number eight, consider action and discussion of second reading, option two A of physical year 22, 23, school calendar, Ms. Kristi Bush.
Good evening, Kristi Bush, you're Director of Student Services. On your tables this morning, this afternoon, you had an extra copy. The purpose of that was the very last day of school on two A, instead of the C that normally means closing, it just had 24. So that's the purpose of that, just in case you wanted to see it. A lot of teachers and a lot of people are used to an O for open, or an opening day is O, and then the C is for closing. So that's the only change that you have in front of you. So tonight, we would like to look at two A as the first choice, or entertain any changes or questions that you might have from last time.
I will say, I went back and asked Ms. Bush, because I just lived through this amazing experience that we'll, we'll release out here in a little bit, but our schedule worked out beautifully this year, that we were out of school on Friday, the 18th, and I had a sweet Baker student that emailed me wanting to see if I would click shut school down because we were going to win the state tournament. This is way, you know, way before we won it. So I was like, we're, good news is we're already out of school, which got me thinking. So I was able to talk with Mr. Keane, and there's no way to know what we are or not able to do, but I will say if we can just kind of think about that as we get to that the same time next year, it might be that that Wednesday workday that we have scheduled in the middle of the week, we might, we might want to shift that once we know early enough what that's going to look like. So that's the only thing I would really, I mean, approve it obviously as is, but it might be something that we need to look at by shifting that workday.
We were fortune tellers last year.
I know. Yeah, it worked out great.
Any questions or discussion?
Let's work.
Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to adopt option two A as the calendar for the 2022, 2023 calendar, school calendar year.
I'll second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
And Ms. Bush, thank you for all your comments on that, too, and the committee.
Okay, you already know it's your turn. Consider action and discussion to approve date and location of GRC graduation from general fund, Mr. Jamie Keane.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Historically, we've had graduation on the last day of school for students. That day this year is on Thursday, so thought about maybe trying a Friday graduation. Sometimes midweek's not real conducive to those folks who are traveling. So thought about maybe the possibility of trying a Friday graduation to see with, so that would be May the 20.
Seventh.
Seventh, yes, May 27th. Location?
To be determined. To be determined.
Well, I think that's, yeah. There's pros and cons to stadium and arena, so, and it's usually what the pro is for one is the con for the other. Pros for the stadium is pretty much unlimited attendance. For the arena, we would probably have to limit it a little bit, maybe 10, eight, 10 tickets per person. Then for the stadium, inclement where there's always a con, whether it gets canceled or it could be. power failure, we would have graduations. About all I got to say, but.
Well, Friday graduation date gives you lots of room to-
Pardon me?
Friday graduation date, I feel like, gives you plenty of backup.
Yeah, we have a couple, I mean, tentatively, a couple of different times to, if something happened Friday evening, a Saturday afternoon, then to a Saturday evening, Monday, or Sunday afternoon, Sunday, it is, keep moving it back, but.
The concern I do have with that weekend in particular, it's Memorial Day weekend, so like the, the potential of bad weather causing to delay also could possibly cause other, you know, other issues for families and for staff. So that is something that we'll, we'll need to work through, but I do feel like we can set the date as Friday, and then we'll still have, obviously, our backup dates. But I do think we need to have some more conversation about, is it going to be on the football field, or is it going to be in the arena? It's nice to have that unlimited seating. Kids have worked so hard to be, you know, to be able to have that experience. So.
That's what he's struggling with right now.
What we always struggle with.
I started to say that.
It's always the issue.
It's a yearly struggle this time.
Yeah, it is. Last year, we froze.
We did. We canceled and then froze.
A little bit.
Yeah.
But it is enjoyable outside.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know an inside graduation at GRC, so it's always been outside. I just, I, it's going to be great either way, and we're going to make whatever you decide work, and.
So are we approving, are we deciding location tonight as well?
We had, we had date and location on there.
Yeah, it would be nice. Folks will start getting invitations out. And then if, if you did decide to do arena, I think folks would be appreciating, knowing they would be limited on how many could, could attend. But if it's at the stadium, then they know that, and there's no restrictions, and they can go ahead and get those invitations out.
What time?
Seven. I answered that with a question, didn't I?
Yeah.
I think seven would work really well.
It's forty-five, I don't know.
I kind of would like to see it on the football field, just because we purchased the floor, the mat.
Oh, is that the mats that we did last year?
Yes.
Okay.
That was a big expense, yeah.
And like Mr. Keen said, it's never been inside. But that was, that was the only, the big concern, is that it was on Memorial Day weekend this year, knowing that it got postponed once last year, but I don't know.
That's the first time.
It's really changed tradition.
I don't know how long it's been postponed.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm thinking.
I think it's happened twice in my twelve years, or eleven, so it's not often. And it's beautiful. I mean, it's a beautiful venue.
So twenty-seventh at seven on football field with backups on the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth?
That's about all you can do.
Mm-hmm.
Any more discussion? Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve May twenty-seventh at seven o'clock at the stadium for GRC's twenty-two graduation.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
Student Learning and Instructional Services.
Now, we didn't talk about funding. It does say from general fund. Was, did we need to talk about funding, or?
The, that might be a question for Mr. Stuck back there. We're not trying to put you on the spot. But this, we've already talked about the stage, and then we're going to have a meeting, a logistics meeting with the high school. Is that scheduled for next week? Like, we want to really talk about parking, we want to talk about what all of the activities are going to be. We've got to get stage rentals in. There's sound equipment, I think, that needed to be used. Where was that paid for last year? I thought Ms. Ellis told me general fund, so that's why I had used the same.
Right. I wonder if we have to approve.
What paid for?
The graduation equipment, like this-
Maintenance budget.
Okay, it was out of the maintenance budget last year.
So really, that's, we don't even know how much it would be to approve it.
We have the stage reserved, it's about three thousand dollars.
But there's other costs that would be assessed.
Yeah, I think they usually, doesn't the board approve the cost of graduation?
That would be really nice.
This is the one issue with the cost of graduation.
No, I mean, I think it is brought to the board. Let me rephrase this. The amount is brought to the board to approve prior to graduation. Or, I was under that, I mean, it seems like we did last year.
We did not do that.
We didn't?
No.
But if you would bring us the next meeting, we could hook you up this year.
Yeah, I can, after that meeting that we have next week, which of course, this is my first one as well. So after that meeting that we have next week, we'll create a list of the needs, we'll get quotes or estimates of what we think that cost is going to be. And I can go ahead and get that preloaded into your folder so that you have an awareness. And then if, if it's something that I feel like is out of line with what his previous leaping spent, then I'll work with Mr. Keen and his budget to make sure that we know graduation planned accordingly. Does that sound okay?
Because I think, like, maintenance is always, they're there, I mean, to help, and I mean, it's a-
We'll be setting up the next stage and ramps and all the others. We'll work out the logistics. We'll still satellite people from campus, we need load flow, bring in people who need transportation from the high school.
Okay, thank you. Great question, Ms. Consoine.
Okay. Number ten, consider action and discussion of academic suite update, Ms. Fodfield and Ms. Bush.
Okay. This is a short update this month, but just to kind of keep you up to date, we had a cardinal lead meeting last week. I think my dates are kind of off. But we focused on our MTSS structures. We brought everyone in. Mr. Dustin Howard spoke to us about some structures that he has in place at RDC. We kind of did a roundtable discussion with scenarios. We're working with our building leaders on creating a matrix for behavior, looking at terrorist metrics data that we've collected and how we're wrapping around our students with, with that. So it was a very successful, lots of good conversation. Again, I think it's, it's been incredible to watch the vulnerability of our leaders as we're having discussions that are sometimes hard. But that's how we're growing, and it's been really good to watch that. So that was a very productive lead. We also have our Excellence in Teaching Awards that we were very proud of. So we had Ms. Amy Bowling, Mr. Jordan Miller, and Ms. Amanda Crowe that we recognized tonight. That was, again, like I said earlier, they were, their peers, of course, nominated them in the buildings. And then, building leaders created kind of a committee. They narrowed it down to three people. And then each building submitted videos to us at the district level. And thank you to Ms. Brenda Consoine for, she sat on that committee with us. So she helped view those videos and have conversations. So they will go, those three will go, May fourteenth, they have a dinner in recognition at University of the Cumberland's also. So that'll be nice to represent Clark County. Our continued work, again, is just, again, our MTSS working with behavior and academic structure. So making sure that we're using data, we're identifying our students, those that are a year below where they need to be, two years where they need to be, and we're having some instructional conversations about how do we even accelerate learning? What does that look like? So making sure we're using data to drive those discussions. We are still working on our Cardinal Connections Academy. So in May is when we will have that rolled out and ready. So that's going to be our district-wide professional development academy for our district, where we are going to highlight teachers in our district who will be actually presenting some things that they're good at and strong at, but then teachers will have the opportunity to go and they get to choose what professional learning they want to go to. So that's going to be, that's going to be fun to watch. Our Cardinal Classroom is also up. So if you look at our website right now, online, we have, we are constantly changing, looking at our pacing guides, just some resources available to teachers, and we're rebuilding that as we go, so that that's going to become a good resource for our teachers. Again, we have our Instructional Impact Team. So again, that is given, our assignments are given during our Cardinal Lead. So we're going out to buildings, visiting classrooms, visiting PLCs within all buildings, and then coming back and giving feedback to our leaders on that. So, again, lots of good discussion. That's also allowing us, I know within our department, to have conversations about what we're seeing and what we need to do to kind of drive our next Cardinal Lead meeting. And so that's been good to kind of collectively talk and work together with that. You're also going to start seeing a lot of our, our journey to a graduate. So we sent out the, I guess, a survey to everyone. We talked to our building leaders, we asked about that, and we sent it to you all as well for our Clarks. So what it's technically called is Portrait of a Graduate, which is built around six competencies of what we want our students to be when they graduate. And so the great thing about this is that we are going to, we will start that language from preschool until they are twelfth graders with us. So the goal is, is it's going to be embedded into our unit plans, it's going to be embedded into our lesson plans. We're going to talk about those competencies, how we develop that. So we are to the point where we've looked at the language, and we have kind of a rough draft of what each letter is going to mean for our journey to a graduate. But once we get that established, we're going to have a community meeting of just stakeholders to actually help us define what we want that to be. For example, one of, one of them is authentic communicator. And so having discussions with our stakeholders within the community about what would you like for us, how can we help, how do you want your students to become an authentic communicator? And so as we are creating lesson plans and units, that will, that will always be at the forefront of our mind, is how do we teach our kids to be communicators? So that's kind of what that is. So we're excited to develop that and work with our leaders in doing so.
L for literate.
Literate.
I'm going to say that every meeting.
I know.
Literate.
L may not be literate necessarily, but she's talked about embedding literacy through all of the strands.
Yes.
So taking feedback.
Because if they can't read upon graduation, we have problems.
Yeah, that's right. So we did start our star reading assessment. We don't have any data for you this month, but we will next month. Star reading, or star assessments, I'm sorry, started yesterday. So we'll have those for you next month to look at, our third round of that data. And then our case assessments will happen in the end of April. So we'll have those to you in May.
When are you testing?
May sixth is the start date right now for our summative assessments. Yeah. Any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
At our, one of our meetings that we went to was at the KFB, we're now, is recommending that we take action on the things that we present to the board. So we're just taking guidance from some of the wonderful trainings that we go to. And you'll notice that the language has changed. Instead of consider approval, we don't want to sway which vote you make. So it's been changed to consider action and discussion for each of those.
Just approve the academic suite update?
Yes, please.
I make a motion to approve the academic suite update.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Out of number eleven, consider action and discussion to approve adding a JAG teacher at the high school from JAG grant to GRC SRF funds. Mr. Keen.
Good evening. I guess it's been close to a month ago now, Representative from JAG Kentucky reached out, really interested in starting a JAG program in Clark County. Dr. McComas and Ms. Bush and I sat in on that meeting, and then that began us having talks for something that we would like to implement at GRC. And it is, and here we are. So however, I mean, if you're familiar with JAG or not, but they do limit the number a little bit to somewhere around sixty to seventy kids. They have to over, there's a matrix that they go by to be selected to participate in this, and it's all about overcoming barriers to graduation and helping with transition to whatever transition may look like, whether it's post-secondary, workforce, military. You know, some of the barriers are academic barriers, environmental, psychological, emotional, work-related. So there's a lot of opportunities for, for kids who are, have some of these barriers to be put in this to help overcome those. It is a competency-based curriculum, deals a lot with career development, job attainment, retention, leadership, employability, financial literacy. So I do feel like that it would benefit element of our kids to help overcome those barriers. The grant covers biggest portion of a teacher, but it doesn't cover it all. That's the SRF part of that is to cover the rest of that.
So what will you do when SRF is over?
Um.
To sustain it?
Well, that may just be a decision for you all to keep up, or it might be an allocation for me to, to do that too. But, and then it also goes in, it really does a good job of keeping track of these students post-secondary too, keeping track on what they did once they graduate from high school. So I would imagine that in two years, that that's going to be doing really well, and that we're going to want to keep it.
We want to keep it.
And we'll have, and we'll have good data, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll have good data on how students, you know, like pre and post, we'll have good data on that, to be able to see, you know, the program is, is what made the change or, you know, did it not? And I have experience with it in another district. And of course, it was pre-pandemic, but I don't know if some of those kids would have been as successful as they were during the pandemic if it had not been for our JAG instructors being able to have like more intentional supports for them. And that's sad to say when you're the superintendent or the principal of a building, like, you want to know how to develop that for across, you know, cascaded across your other programs. Having JAG inside your school ends up helping train other teachers so that you can kind of replicate some of those models that are aligned to those competencies that he's talking about.
So how long is your grant for, for that? Is it year to year?
It's year, year to year. And then I think that either group can decide to withdraw from the grant. It's rare that, that either decides to. I mean, they can if we're not holding up our end of the bargain with numbers and follow-through. And they do a really good job of training our teachers on, on the curriculum and selection. So, and I just, I don't foresee a problem with either of us wanting to back out of it. But it is a year-to-year grant.
So it says the total expense is sixty-five. What is the JAG scholar, I mean, what is the JAG grant amount?
Forty thousand.
Forty, okay. That's what I was trying to figure out.
Yeah, up to forty thousand.
So it's that additional amount that goes to SRF to pick up?
Benefits, or you pay for, you know, if there's a teacher now that makes over that plus benefits, it would cover the excess of forty.
Okay. Now, so who screens the children, the students? Does the JAG?
Well, they help, they're counselors. As they're doing the scheduling, counselors will also help screen with that. But JAG said that they would be more than happy to come and help with that process too.
And there's certain criteria that they'll train the counselors on to make sure that the student that is matched for the program is actually the ones that are selected, and not just, oh, this kid could really use it, or that, you know, like, you have screening tools that are used, and they have to go through and kind of rank students based on some of these other barriers that they might be experiencing. And that's how you determine who gets into, gets requested, you know, like, they get an invite to be in the JAG program.
What's that stand for?
Jobs for America's Graduates.
Okay.
But again, it is something we can, I hate to say back out of, because it is an amazing program. But it is something that we can, for, you know, the next two years, it's money that's already been allocated, that he's going to be able to use. Plus, he gets forty thousand dollars from that program to save him the cost of that additional teacher if he wanted to use that. And then after that, again, we'll have to look at the data that we have to determine the success, and then the feasibility of how we're going to move, you know, past it, with that position.
So is it for all students, freshmen through seniors?
Yeah, I think ideally, I think the, it would be fifteen, sixteen students per grade level. And when seniors graduate, another crop comes in as freshmen. We have to decide coming, you know, get their idea of how that looks starting a program. Do we want fifteen, sixteen seniors having been in the program one year and then graduating out? Or do we want to divide those numbers up a little differently? So, and they said that that would, we had a conversation about that. And we can do that, however, but ideally, you want to start flowing four years of students. As one group graduates, you've got another crop coming in as freshmen.
Any more questions or discussion?
So I'm going to throw this out. So if we approve this-
As one group graduates, you've got another crop coming in as freshmen.
Any more questions or discussion?
So I'm going to throw this out. So if we approve this and in two years, we don't have ESER funds. What I'm thinking is, do we approve the, this position for two years? Or for the year? If it's year to year, how do you?
Well, for two years, he has access to the federal ESERS that we assign to the school.
Right, that he could use.
That he can use. And so then, once that goes away, just like I have done on all of the current staffing allocations of anything that's grant funded, they will automatically have to make a decision at that point. And then that will be something that I will bring back to you all in terms of the staffing allocation. And so you'll even see that next year. Like you'll see that that position is staying because the ESER dollars are on there. And then that following year, you'll see the same thing. But then in that third year, you'll see that that is one of those positions that, based on, um, what he has available, either is going to be maintained and it would be noted as such, or it's going to say that this is a position that we're going to have to have conversation about to determine if then general funds or other, uh, dollar, you know, grant dollars that we can find can help, uh, supplement the, the pay. So it won't be like there and then it just stays. And that's some of the concerns that you all have had in the past. And while, you know, while we're being, um, the way, the way that we're leading right now is making sure that we have the positions that are accounted for year to year. And once they're on the books, that they don't just stay on the books. They have to be vetted every year. And I think we've got a really good process in place that's going to make sure that those things don't happen. And that will be reflected in the minutes too. So I'll make sure that I write that down so that it is based on the next two years. But you'll see that on that staffing allocation next year as well.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve, um, adding a JAG teacher at GRC, um, and using the JAG grant and GRC ESER funds.
And to be reviewed at the end of two years.
And to be reviewed at the end of two years.
I don't have that included, thank you.
Have a motion, do I have a second? I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four, zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, number 12, Consider Action and Discussion to Create Two Instructional Specialist Positions From Title I Funds and/or ESER for a Total of Four. Dr. McCallmas.
Uh, so in reviewing all of the things that we currently have, uh, at our disposal, we used to have a much bigger academic department. And over the years, especially with the pandemic, that has dwindled. And we have these three amazing people sitting in our, uh, front row here. And the work that we are charged with and to do, we really need a stronger, uh, and I don't mean any insult because they're, they're, it's a very strong team, but we need a stronger team that can have the variety of expertise to be able to go out and really support, um, the leaders in our building, to make sure that they have, uh, coaching needs met, not just like you go in and coach a teacher, but our, our principals, um, you know, also need to be coached to make sure that we're all looking at things through the common language. So we want to have expertise that are built cross-curricu, or I'm sorry, cross-curriculum and cross-grades spans. So you don't want to just assign somebody to one school and think they can be an expert at everything in that school. We want to have, make sure that we have like the social, emotional piece along the lines of mental health, uh, with that MTSS structure. We want to make sure that we stay abreast of all of mathematical and science practices, which then are transferable to other, uh, programs, especially at the middle school and high school level. We want to make sure that we have strong practices in place with ELA and literacy. And that is something, again, that's transferable. If you have a struggling reader in middle school, uh, you really need that elementary expert to be able to come up and help that, that teacher and that principal in the middle school to make sure that those appropriate strategies that then become developmentally appropriate are, are ready to meet the needs, uh, for those students and those teachers and that building leader so that we're all seeing the same thing. Um, so we want to expand our academic suite to have four instructional specialists that, again, are going to have a range of expertise. So it's not going to be something where like Ms. Fethan is not going to just be assigned to like GRC. She has an expertise, she has a lot of expertise, but one of her, uh, biggest corners is she's always like the mathematical and science lens. Her Mr. Shinaki, he falls into the elementary side with the, uh, ELA and literacy lens. And we need to be able to expand those services, uh, with more folks that are going to be able to help with that cross-literacy, that vertical and horizontal alignment, what are our pacing guides look like, you know, all of that takes a lot of work. And that's one more thing that we're throwing on teachers. And then it's this third grade team at this elementary school is doing a dynamic job, but then we're not intentionally reaching out to the third grade team at another elementary school that might have newer teachers and they're not sharing those resources and making sure that we have a district-wide aligned curriculum and not individual school curriculum. So, um, and I can expand more, um, if you want me to, but the need, I feel like the need is there by just seeing, you know, the three people and being able to say, this is my entire academic team. Um, and we have other folks who I don't want to take away from our, uh, district services and or our special ed because they're also part of that. They, they work very closely along with MTSS structures, making sure that our EL and our special needs students are met. But we're talking about like system-wide design, uh, that, I don't want to say it's lacking, but it's not as strong as we need to be. If we are going to be a district of distinct distinction, if we're going to be a transformational district that's going to go in the direction of our second is in the ground and making sure that when our kids graduate, that we're ready to walk them into post-secondary education through coalition career training, that we're ready to walk them into some great jobs with apprenticeships that are set up and that we are aligned with the needs of our community. And right now, I feel like we're, we're, we're not strong on the instructional side. We have strong instructional practices in pockets, but we don't have, it's kind of going back to the whole reason why we're doing the strategic plan. We have strong systems of schools, but we don't have a strong school system yet. And so, um, in order to do so, the instructional specialists, we have two job descriptions. I'm sorry, we already have the job description, I'm asking for two more positions to be created. And this is being spent also with federal dollars and, and I'll also throw this out there, you all typically in the past and not necessarily, we didn't bring that to the board. Uh, but I want to make sure that I'm operating it with transparency and that I'm bringing that so that we always, we're still always allocating and, um, keeping track of what positions we have. So four will be four unless I bring it back, you know, to, for you all again to look at something else, then you're going to know that that's the number that we have. If one person leaves, then obviously we'll post that and re, you know, and replace the position. And that will be, uh, sustainable in the Title II, Title I, uh, so it's not even relying on ESER. These are, uh, regular dollars. Ms. Consta knows because she, that was your whole role before. Uh, and they used to have like coordinators and all of these other positions. Um, and I think that's why the district was as successful as it was before. They had the support that they needed to go into schools. And we just, you know, we don't have that. I'm going in and doing, and I don't want to stop doing that. I love, I love, I love being that kind of a leader. But we have people going in trying to do the support and coming back and building the systems. And so you just, you need more folks that are going to be able to help take on that work so that teachers aren't given the feedback and then going back and doing the work too, like building the curriculum alignments and the curriculum maps and monitoring all of their data. Uh, Ms. Baumfield's got, uh, data boards, uh, data dashboards for all of the schools. And that's like a springboard for them to go back and do the other work where they're drilling in. And those are things that we want to be able to keep up. The last thing I want to do is like, we're starting great things and then we don't have the manpower to keep up the work. And so I feel like we're at the point where we've got a lot of these plates spinning and if I don't have a strong, stronger team in terms of numbers, we're going to start dropping plates. And I'm not, I'm not prepared to do that yet. So I'm asking if you will allow me to, uh, create two more positions paying out of federal dollars that are sustainable through the grant.
Any more questions or discussion?
I wasn't at the last meeting, so I really, but this is where I struggle. I think it's a great thing and Brenda and I discussed this back when she was in that role. So the problem I'm having is, is that the last meeting of cutting positions and then we see this on this current agenda. And it's like, we're taking people out of classrooms, but then we're going to put this district wide. I get it, would fully be in support of it, but then I also say, I want to see more teachers in classrooms and we're taking kids, taking teachers away and taking them out of the classrooms, but we're going to put these two positions in place. Again, great idea, I, I fully can support it, but I have a problem with it when you cut positions and I understand that you all are put in that position, I just have a hard time being, I mean.
And I, and I completely respect your position and I can't tell you that I don't feel the same way. But at the same time, if we're going to get stronger, we have to have a broader system of supports for our teachers that are currently in the classroom to, so that their building leaders and the teachers are supported at the capacity that they need to be supported. And right now, we don't have that. What we've had in the past, and not trying to sound disrespectful to my board, but what we've had in the past is, uh, a lot of positions got created that didn't necessarily come before you. A lot of positions got created in addition to the state requirement, in addition to your, our own staffing allocation. And what we have learned how to do is to say, I'm struggling with meeting the needs of this student, can you come help me? So I hired a person to come and get that student to take them out of my classroom instead of me learning how to grow capacity to be a stronger teacher inside the classroom. And we have great teachers. So I, I don't want to say anything that's going to be construed that I don't respect and support our teachers, but if we're going to really give them the support that they need, we have to have a strong central office team that goes in and provides the support and helps to do the work so that our building leaders and our teachers are going to be more capable in our classroom to meet the needs of all of their students without providing all of these additional resources that we have grown accustomed to needing. And our test scores and all of our other data, we've got all, for a district our size and the amount of staff that we have, it's, it's not moving our test scores. So we're not doing something right. And I think we really put the horse before the cart, so to speak. We increased all of this staff, which is great, but we didn't have the capacity built to help do some of the work that we needed to do inside the classroom. So I still stand beside that, I have, we've got to have a stronger, uh, larger academic team at central office. I'm not asking for 15 people.
No, I, and like I said, I mean, I supported when Brenda came before with her, I mean, and asking for, I don't think those positions ever got filled, but when you ask for positions, I, I fully.
And that's a good point. I could technically go post those right now and get them filled. But since they've been vacated for so long, I want to operate in transparency and I want to bring them back before my board and let you know that we have, we have a need. And I could have called them a Title I Coordinator, I could have called it a Title II this, right? There's lots of job descriptions for positions that are currently unfilled.
Right.
And I also want to create like a catalog so that you know how many positions are you supporting in instructional specialist. You know, there's going to be a way that we can track that, either through Ms. Nance or, uh, between Ms. Baumfield and Dr. Parrish, we'll be able to track. There's four of these. So when I'm going to hire a position, it better still be four and not, I'm turning it into five or I'm turning it into more interventionists in the, in the schools or it's going to become more special ed staff or more instructional, all that are respected and very valued and needed. But if we don't have a system in, in place to help support the work for them, we are, we are adding great people to a good cause and we have no direction. And so that's, that's where I'm at.
Right. And, and I can see that. And that's where I struggle is, is when I have people come in that, you know, possibly losing their job and then I have an agenda in front of me of adding more jobs and you're looking at those people going, you know, yes, I see that you need it, I know that you, and I want to support you in that and give you that, but it's hard when you're looking at them going, well, sorry.
I understand.
You know, but, you know, it's, it's like you want to find that happy medium. And plus I have kids in this district and I want more hands-on with these, with my kids. And, you know, we all know what COVID did inside the building and the virtual and all that. We know that, we know that we've lost a lot of students that we got to figure out how to get back. I mean, I think we're all aware of that. And, I mean, it's just hard. It's hard to look at this and see it right after that meeting. And again, I wasn't here, so I don't know, you know, I'm not going to judge on that because I didn't hear the conversation. Um, but, you know, that's just, that's where I'm coming from when I looked at this and I'm like, oh gosh, you know, that's, that's what, I've got to turn around and talk to these people again. You know, that's where I'm at and, you know, like I said, I'm not putting down the position at all. I think that that's a great idea. I think it would come in handy. I think it's something that's needed. I'm not saying that it's not, but it's just hard. It's hard to look at those same people that are going to be looking for a job that we could possibly lose, lose to another district that are great people in our district right now. That's where I'm struggling.
I understand that.
I mean, that's, as board, or as myself on this board, and I, I would assume that you all feel that way, that if you all are sitting there looking at these people face to face and then we've got two more positions on here to fill, that it's just hard.
Well, if you look, if, no, I'm going to see if I can explain it. So when you have the federal grant, um, it is very specific of how you can use that grant. And you can fund two, you could fund two teachers out of it, but when you are cutting 19 teachers, which two teachers do you decide to fund with that pot of money versus do you, um, develop instructional specialists that can maybe go out and help the masses? So it, you're not, it's hard to.
It is.
It's hard to see we're cutting positions, but also that grant could only sustain the two people. So where do you choose? You say, oh, well, let's pick, you know, I'll be a battlefield.
Yeah, share.
Well, let them have the Title I teacher.
These positions have the ability to affect really.
The whole.
The whole district. And we have some test scores that are not great. And then we're coming off of COVID and nobody really knows what this year's test scores.
What the curriculum work is going to be like in the next year or two, so.
Okay, well, let me ask this, one more thing, Megan, then I'll. No, I, I will let you take your video. No, no, you're cool. Do we have a plan in, right now, that we are trying to reach the students that we have lost to bring them back?
Yes.
The homeschool kids?
Yes.
Is that what you're referring to?
And, you know, the kids, when it, I think it's 600 and some?
We're at 613.
Yes. Are we working on bringing them back in to possibly get our seat money up to possibly keep our employees?
Well, we, actually this week I've already had two parents that have emailed. One kept her daughter at the high school. Um, and then her younger daughter, she was nervous about how elementary schools were going and when we were in the pandemic. She's hearing all kinds of great things about energy around our district and the things that she's seeing going on in the schools. We're setting up meetings with her to come in and tour. Uh, she's going to be a sixth grader at Baker. And I had another great email like that too. So we, what, what we are doing and promoting even through social media and like how the community is talking, how our parents are responding to us, they're talking to their neighbors. They're letting them know, because it wasn't necessarily that they were anti-school. They just didn't know. You know, we were a district that didn't come back, uh, like other districts did last year. That didn't set well with a lot of parents that also had to go to work and they're relying on grandma's and grandpa's and everybody else. Or just like they were telling me, we're trying to cram everything in, in the evenings or on the weekends to get their homework done. It was easier to homeschool or go to private school because private schools were open. Um, and so they have seen that we haven't, you know, we haven't shut our doors this year. We, we have, we have reduced our virtual enrollment. We brought those kids back. They didn't leave and go to homeschool, they came back into our school. So we did gain some of those students back. And now I think next year, you are going to see some of those homeschool students that are going to want to come back. So the plan is, you know, we're going to carry on with school. We are reaching out individually to those homeschool families. Uh, Ms. Bush actually sends postcards to them too, and we're going to, you know, ramp that up to make sure that that's there. But we also want to look at our virtual program. We're reassessing that. We actually had a meeting, Ms. Baumfield, myself, and Ms. Bush, Kelly Fitton was there for a little bit with two different organizations to move away from the one that we were using and to determine, is this a viable option for us? Meek County uses this one program, has a great setup for it, but they're K through six. We're interested in, is it, was it, am I right on that? K through six?
They're the one county we thought we liked that has the K to six.
K to six, so they have a K to six program. We were actually looking at, maybe we want a five through 12 program because we see the need and a lot of research that talks about the younger student needing to be in that face-to-face setting, and how much more difficult it is for them to learn in a virtual setting than it is for older students. So we are exploring those options, too, because I really want them to be back in our physical building. I want them to be connected in relationship with bus drivers, with custodians, with principals, with teachers, you know, I want them, I want them with us. But if not, I want us to have a good option so that if they choose to come back to us, they can have a viable virtual program. I don't have enough information to come and tell you what that's going to look like at this point, but we're also exploring those, those things.
Well, that's, I mean, I just kind of wondered if we were kind of targeting in on them, or, you know, trying to reach them, taking them a basket of food, whatever, you know, come back, we'll take you back, you know. I, I will say this, I was one, mine were virtual, they are now back in person, it went great, thank you Kristi Bush for everything you did for my babies.
And it's hard.
It is hard, but it was very easy, smooth transaction. My kids are completely happy.
Yeah.
Mama's happy.
Yeah.
They did, they've been back now a week, I think, so.
But it is a hard decision.
They have all been great. Principal's been great to work with.
You need to say that out loud.
I'm reaching it right now, so it is a smooth transaction, y'all bring your babies back.
Yeah.
They, my kids were out for two years, and so this was their first full week back there. They went back last week, we figured that was the best way to do it.
Midweek, right?
Yeah, we started midweek like you would a normal, because last week was a short week, they had a great week, and they, they love it. So again, Kristi Bush was great, she helped me get my babies lined out all through everything. So yes, I do encourage you to bring your kids back, and it was a very easy, and mine are still wearing masks, so that wasn't a big deal. No issue with that.
And there's a lot of petitioned staff that choose, you know, choose to wear masks. I had a little bit of a tickle in my throat last week and I thought, just be on the safe side, I'm going to put one on, too. It turned out to be fine, but, you know, that's individual.
They take it off when they go outside, because I'm like, I'm not trying to kill my kids outside with their mask on, but, so yes, yes, usually I will come out.
But I do hope I have explained well enough the, the immense need, that if we want to be a successful district, again, we can, you know, we can put two more positions back in schools, and they would be important. You know, the relationship they would make with children would be important. But unfortunately, that would not give us the results that we need if we're not building the capacity at the.
The whole.
Yes.
Oh, I'm fine with, like I said, I'm fine with this position, it has nothing to do with this position, I just want to see if we can get them 600 kids back in here so we can.
And that's important, too.
Because we have some amazing staff members that I'm afraid we're going to lose, that if we can get those kids back, then we can keep. So that's, that was mine, you know, it ain't over till the bat lane thing, so.
Very respective.
And to touch, before, before we vote, to touch on what Tiffany said, I, I think most everyone, Dr. McComas and, and Ms. Bush realize the urgency to reach out to kids that are on homeschool and were once enrolled and not, and they've got some pretty good systems. I feel like they've implemented a touch base, and if that's something you want to add to the agenda next time for Ms. Bush to give us an update, or if you want to touch base with her, I think it'd be well worth your time.
Well, that and even doing like, you know, we always had that back to school night out there at.
BCTC.
I worked on that.
Ready Fest.
Yes, something like that, that would bring people out to see it's okay.
Ms. Endrick's already has me connected, which Bruce Manley and I are connected anyway, but she had reached out to me from another committee that she's serving on, so Ms. Bush and the FRCs are already on that, so we've already got.
Bringing Ready Fest back.
Yeah, we've already got all that stuff connected. We did have conversation about College Park, though, like some people are wanting to bring back the College Park days because it is convenient for families, you know, walking, walking and being able to get there. So we are going to have to have some conversation, is there a Ready Fest one and a Ready Fest two? Because we want to make sure that it is accessible to families, so Ms. Bush is working on that with the, our frisbee.
Well, I would be glad to help if I can with that.
All right, I'm going to write that down.
Oh, she will, she knows.
Yeah.
Okay, do we have a, an information to make a vote?
Yes.
Okay. And I'd like to make a motion to approve two instructional specialist positions from Title I funds and ESR for a total of four. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Finance update, consider action and discussion of monthly CCPS financial update. Ms. Hedges.
Good evening, my name is Jennifer Dorsey Hedges, I'm the accounting manager in the finance department. I am standing in for Ms. Ellis tonight, who, you know, was on maternity leave. She actually had her baby last week, and I understand they're doing very well, they're having a baby boy. If you have any questions, let me know. If I don't know the answer, I'll find the answer out and get back with you.
Okay. Are there any major updates that we need to know about?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Everything's pretty standard from the finance reports that she has in there. Our sheriff's tax report, I think we're at like 99.2 or something, yeah. There's all of like four people in Clark County that. Yeah, so they do a great job.
Yeah, 98%.
Yeah, oh, yeah, there's like not many.
Do y'all want some time to review before you vote to accept it?
I couldn't sleep, I went vote.
Yeah, I've gone through.
Yeah, usually finance is the one thing you will definitely come over.
Yeah.
And I told Ms. Dorsey Hedges, I said, don't stress too much about it. I said, I'll hear before if there's like pay apps or something that they have a question about, which I always appreciate that. I want, I want to say, I want to vocalize that, I always appreciate when there's something that you're not quite sure what, you know, like S M and E, there was one of those pays that somebody asked me about, like making sure that I'm giving, you know, given time to go back through that and get the right information, get it connected to the right directors, that we get the information back to you. So that, that's really helpful for me, as well as our finance department, so thank you for that.
And I'll make a motion to approve the monthly financial update.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Number 14, consider action and discussion to authorize payment of salaries and accounts payable. Ms. Dorsey Hedges.
Some questions?
Anything exciting?
I love that this is here now. It makes so much more sense.
Than having it at the end.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. This was, again, great feedback from you all on me even asking some questions, like, why are we doing that? And we're kind of like, that's the way it's always been.
Because it's well, yeah, it makes so much more sense.
Yeah, thank you.
Do y'all have any questions?
No.
I didn't have any questions.
Any discussion?
Nope.
And I make a motion to approve or to authorize payment of salaries and accounts payable. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, internal board business superintendent's report.
Okay, so before I go through my superintendent's report, I'm really excited, Mr. Keane, thank you for saying baccalaureate. So we've always had baccalaureate, but that's actually been something that's disconnected from our school district. But that's not something that I'm personally used to. I'm used to our school districts being very connected to that process. And so Mr. Keane has been in contact with some folks about planning a baccalaureate service. Do you mind coming up and sharing just a little bit? And we're going to be better partners and promote, that's a huge family event for a lot of our families in faith, and we just want to make sure that we honor and respect the ceremony.
Yeah. So I've been in contact with Steve Crosby at Calvary Christian, so he's actually going to come out either the later part of this week or next week and start finalizing, but we are looking at Sunday, May 22nd as, as the date, that's the Sunday before the graduation. It is all voluntary, nothing is expected to be mandatory for our, our students, but it is something that I feel like that not a lot of folks do anymore. We're proud to continue to do it and give those folks that want to take part in it the opportunity, and I think our community really gets behind it, too.
So I just wanted to give you an update, get on our relationships with our community and the good work that Mr. Keane's doing to, to reach out, and we've heard from students that also are excited about it. And some families that aren't able to come to graduation are able to come still to this ceremony that recognizes their relative that's getting ready to graduate.
Could you possibly send us the information, when you said it?
Yes.
And what time?
Mm-hmm.
And I'm assuming it's going to be at Calvary since you talked to Steve.
Yes, it will be there.
That way we, maybe, because a lot of times I think that was the, maybe a breakdown was.
We definitely, like the day.
Yeah. So we'll have lots of information to you all, like in terms of invitations for baccalaureate and graduations and proms, proms coming up at the end of the month. And so we'll have all, all of that starting to come out to make sure that you're, you're excited.
Are you ready?
Look at it, he's like, yep, I know, I can feel his eyes.
If you haven't had an opportunity, it's really, the speakers are always really good, and then our Cardinal singers always just give me chills, so it's just, it, it, it's really great to be a part of.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your extra attention on it, too, sir. Okay, and then as part of the superintendent's report, I won't go through the lead connect, you all have had this in your drive for a while, and so this is part of, again, our work that our academic suite, as long as, as well as everyone on our base team, from HR updates to sped EL, food service, Mr. Stump gets operations facility updates that's in there for leaders. So remember, this is always about two weeks in the rears, because it's more aligned to our Cardinal Lead PLC than it is to our board meeting, but just good information so that you can see either what's already happened, because by the time you get it, it might have been in the past, or expectations that, different program timelines that are coming up, that the base team wants to make sure that our principals are privy to. So strategic one, again, I always try to align my board reports to the standards that you're going to actually be evaluating me on, and that's going to be here before you know it. So I'm a little nervous when I start thinking about that, but I'm excited, too. But with strategic leadership, a lot of that has actually been on our strategic, strategic planning. And we had the privilege of going ahead and starting work sessions with our base team and our five-star team, which is our principal leaders. We talked about the need, the timeliness of strategic planning concerns. We actually spent a lot of time in the, we've done this before, why hasn't it worked? We've done this before, where are we now? And what we discovered is that we didn't really partner with our community. After we went through a long strategic planning process in prior years, developed a great strategic plan, then it got, it went from big to super tight. Then it just became like just the folks at this table or just the base team monitoring it, and you lose sight of real perspective from your community stakeholders and are well-rounded of that steering committee. So Ms. Rock's already left, but I wish she would have stayed here, because that was one of her best questions, is like, what, who's going to be in charge of this? What happens when you leave? What happens when I leave? What happens? And so we want to stay true to that steering committee that's going to help keep our district held accountable, myself included, our base team, and they will be able to be that guiding presence, and that's going to be made up of those folks that I've told you about last month. But I'm really excited about the, again, Ms. Baumfield was talking about that vulnerability, like we've, we had it during those two days. It was kind of like, this all sounds great, but what's really going to make sure that this works? So we are trying to be incredibly mindful of that. And then you have folks like Mr. Stump that have been here 32 years?
31.
31, 31 years, and he got to reminisce along with Ms. Lowry about like, yes, we've done this, and then it kind of, you know, and you were here, too, Ms. Condon, it's like, great ideas, and I don't want to be full of great ideas and not follow through. So that's really important to me that we, that we build this. So that's been a lot of our work. Expanding opportunities, I moved that one now to strategic leadership because we've gone past that collaborative leadership and we're really trying to match the needs of our community. BCTC worked with me to put out a survey to our industry of business leaders about the BCTC programs that are offered here at Winchester, about our ATC programs and our CTE, which is the career of technical ed that's offered at GRC. We want to make sure that we're not duplicating services, but we also want to make sure that what we're offering is reflective of what our landscape of our business and, you know, business and industry need. So we're working on those things. I had the privilege of speaking at the Rotary Club and the Winchester HR that was talking about the future vision that we have for Clark County. And, you know, number one, we want our community to fall back in love with public education. And that means that we are going to produce amazing citizens that are going to be ready for whatever Clark County needs. We want them to go to college and come back, we want them to go to work right down the road, and then be on site-based councils, and so we are really trying to create this community of walking our kids into greatness through our journey of a graduate of a profile. So, I'm sorry, profile of a graduate. I get really excited about that stuff. But we did move that now into the strategic planning because it's starting to connect the pieces to some of this other work that we're seeing in schools and from our base team. Under instructional leadership, I won't say too much on that because that's part of what our academic suite update was around with the Cardinal Lead PLC. I do want to point out that that I time, sometimes that can sound overwhelming. Building principals, I'm out of my building, I'm going here, I'm going there, and we're getting into crunch time. But that's super important if we're going to be transforming, a transformational change school. We've got to stay abreast of what's going on in other schools, we've got to stay connected with, with other principals, and more importantly, our teachers, they need to see that they're so respected that we're learning from everyone. If I can send GRC principal into a third grade classroom and he can come back and talk about some literacy concept to his ELA department, those are the things that those other principals may not see that's impacting the high school, or vice versa. So that's, that time is really important, that we protect that. Our principal meeting, and again, it's called a five-star meeting, strategic planning is what our focus was this month, and that meets the Tuesday before our board meeting, just in case you're interested, I always meet with them the Tuesday before our board meeting. I won't go through the list, but you can see there, the cultural leadership, highlighted events that I've attended in our community, trying to stay very well-connected with business and community leaders, along with just getting out and about to our school events, so I can connect with parents, which is really awesome. Don't know if you all heard, but we're state champions.
Yeah.
So, it's kind of big, we're going to have a lot of hoopla going on there, but also our girls, they had a really successful season, our GRC hoops, won districts in region, had a stellar run at state. They came up short, but they made us really proud, and of course, second state champion since 1951 is pretty impressive, so we've had a lot of work that's going on there to build up our community. Under human resources, Dr. Parrish has been working with us to meet some of the needs where we have some teacher shortages, believe it or not, in like math and science, you know, that's kind of like the tale of all times, you still have it, the pandemic has made it a little bit more exasperated. It's also going to kind of help us with diversity, making sure that we have more representation in our schools of teachers that look like some of our students, you know, we have a lot of women, too, in our schools, but an international teacher recruiting organization, we're actually talking with a couple of them so that we can do that. Something else that we're looking into are alternate routes of certification. I've talked to you all a lot about the Option 7 Task Force that I've been sitting on with KDE so that we can have that, want that alternate route approved, not just for our district, but statewide work there. But there's also eight other options that teachers can go through that we don't explore or use a whole lot. But now that we're in this time of, and while we are going through staffing allocation, there's some positions that we still have emergency certified staff in that we're trying to make sure that we can recruit candidates that are going to be highly qualified. Some of that is through professional work experience, as long as they have a master's or a bachelor's degree for like our CTE pathways, so like someone who is a medical researcher for UK with bioengineering, they don't, may not have a teaching certification, but they have a high-level professional degree that they might be able to come and teach a class for us because they're tired of research at UK. Those are some of the things that we're exploring there. Masking is now recommended in all of our schools, including preschool, we were able to go to that this week, which, you know, it's kind of, it wasn't one that we could do right away, and I, I wanted to have it like all across the board at one time, but it actually served us better because our littlest ones, you know, you have, I wanted, it's nice to know that what we, the decision we made was reflective of our, our community, and the numbers have not been up and down. And so now you have your three and four-year-olds that, again, their, their articulation skills are, you know, not that of a kindergartner or a 12th grader, so their mask, we were able to recommend a masking, and a lot of that was also in partnership with our Head Start Agency. Consolidated monitoring, so I ask you all to give me some grace this month because of all of the awesome ballgames that are going on, as you notice, Ms. Nance is not here, and in addition, we have about 25 to 30 KDE folks here, we are one of the districts that's under consolidated monitoring, and so that started today, and it's going really Um, and it's going really well. And they're going to go over programs. Today we had Perkins and CTE, uh, and that was like a start and stop. So we're kind of finished with that one. Uh, IDEA for, uh, special ed and preschool, that's going to be ongoing. Our alternative school, all of our title programs. Um, so today was just day one and that's going on for the rest of the week. And then under collaborative leadership, again, just huge shout out, I wish Mr., I should have said this while he was still, still here, but huge shout out to, uh, our GRC hoops and our Wind City, um, our champions for the twenty-twenty-two state title and basketball again since nineteen fifty-one. So collaborative leadership really started about, uh, right after they won that regional title because we had an idea that both of our teams were going to have a good run in state. And so we secretly were working on plans of what we needed to do to make sure that we could have these great events for our kids and our community. And it was allowed us to very quickly get a parade set up at night, uh, for the boys. Uh, we were able to have pep buses for our region and our state, uh, meets. We partnered with a couple of, um, business owners that paid for some of our pep buses, so we'll get reimbursed from them. Um, but I really want to thank the mayor, our police chief, our judge executive, our representative and our senator for some of the work that they've done behind the scenes for us so that we can be ready. Um, and I don't want to reveal everything because we're still putting some finishing touches, but we will have more information that comes out on social media this week so that we can have another big event this weekend and into Monday. We couldn't have anything this, this week at school unfortunately because of consolidated monitoring. But, uh, the work that's been going on before that has been, uh, really appreciated by everybody involved. And so that was my highlight. At the end, you'll see go-cards. And then under influential leadership, of course, we're in the last days of the legislative session. I have been doing a big push along with other superintendents around school budgets, uh, public education, staying the focus um, through KASA, uh, trainings. But we're going to also working with our Kentucky Association of School Superintendents over the legislative session. Uh, KSBA conference, you know, of course, you all heard a lot of those things that were going on there. And then our KEDC Board of Directors, we had intentional, like assignments through them so that we could reach out to, uh, not just our representatives and senators, but others around certain topics that were super important, uh, to public education. And then also, uh, those other two groups. So just, that's, that's all I have. Y'all have any questions? Been a busy month. Uh, I think they're all busy, but, uh, they're great. This, this is, this was a, this was a good month.
Good, yeah.
I miss Ms. Nance. I want that to be on, Ms. Nance, that needs to be reflected in the minutes.
Any questions for Dr. McComas? Excuse me. Okay, on to consent agenda items. Any questions about any of that stuff?
I'm good with this.
Okay.
Are you good with this?
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items sixteen through twenty-one, twenty-two. Oh, no, twenty-one, sorry.
Yeah.
Twenty-one. I'm so used to being on the next page.
I know.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
We did the second on that, I'm sorry.
I did.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Ms. Dorsey.
Okay, item number twenty-two adjourned to closed session.
So.
Do you have a motion? Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we make, uh, do I have a motion?
I have a motion to, uh, adjourn to closed session.
Okay, I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. We are in closed session at eight.
At oh one.
Oh, one.